Will you everybody stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to open the meeting?
I make a motion to open the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item number one, Chairman's comments. So, item number three has been requested by the applicant to be continued, and we're going to continue that to what date, Bill?
We're going to continue that to June 13th.
Okay, so can I have a vote to continue that meeting to June 13th, please?
I make a motion, we continue that to June 13th?
Second.
Per the request of the applicant, we'll continue that to June 13th. Item number two, 582 Canton Street Form A Plan, MAP 30, Lot 70, 72, and 73.
Is this a continuation or are we opening?
No, well, it's, I'm sorry, it's not really openly, just a review of a Form A plan.
Mr. Chairman, I've got it on the, put it on the screen. Oh, Mr. Chairman, I have it on the screen.
So, let me formally open the item, I guess.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Can I have a motion to open item number two, 582 Canton Street?
I make a motion, I make a motion to open 582 Canton Street?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is, property owner owns a very large lot, and other family members own it. What they're doing is adding property to what would be now Lot Two. Lot One, it owns all, it goes, it's a large property that goes all the way down, as you can see here. What they're going to do is they're going to make Lot One, cut it off right here, adding more property to the lot, propose what's going to be New Lot Two. So, the property at 582 Canton went all the way down where, to the, almost the bottom of the page. They are adding rear yard to 28 Pratt's Court, and then the property that's 34. So, they're adding rear lot area. Frontage hasn't changed to any of the lots, and they're making lots, you know, adding backyards to them.
But it doesn't, it doesn't appear that 34 has any frontage other than two 20-foot openings?
Yes. It's an existing, it's a legal existing non-conforming lot, we're just adding rear yard to it. It can, you know, since you're not altering the frontage, you can, you can sign it as a Form A, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
And my recommendation is you vote to endorse the Form A.
So, we already had three lots, they're just reconfiguring the three lots?
Correct. We have three lots, no frontage is changing, and the two lots on Pratt Street are getting some large rear yards now.
Okay.
Where did that property come from? That was all within the same family, they owned it, now they're just splitting it up?
I believe, I believe the same family owns the three lots.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Can I have a motion in this, please?
Motion to approve the change in the three lots.
And we will endorse that at the end of the meeting, I have the my lot.
I have a second on that, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item number three is continued. Item number four, discussion on ZBA 40B application, 338 Canton Street, MAP 43, Lot 003, Hebrew Senior Life is proposing a 200-unit affordable senior housing development. Bill, I will let you speak to this.
Mr. Chairman, yes, there's a, Hebrew Senior Life has proposed, has been working with the town and the Select Board on a senior facility, senior housing's needed, and they own property on Canton Street, and so they have, are looking at proposing 200 units with a whole host of waivers. The ZBA will hold their first hearing on May 2nd. That'll be more of a, the 40B process usually takes several meetings in a while, so the first meeting will be introduction of the property, kind of an outline of the review. We'll be looking at sending the traffic out to our traffic consultant, discussing that, then kind of discussing, you know, when we'll look at the engineering and grading reviews, and then, you know, the ZBA can map out their whole reviews. Now, I have emailed, part of the thing, the Planning Board gets copies, I've emailed everything. I have, and I know, you know, I offered that if you wanted to come by to get paper copies. I know that, I gave Mr. Murphy paper copies, I know you have some, I know Mr. Terry does. I have paper copies here for the, both, the two Pauls. Do you want 11 by 17, or large copies, size? I have them right now.
If you have the large, I'll take the large.
Okay. I'll take the large.
Large, okay.
It's just easier to read. I don't know how anybody does anything on their phone, I need at least a computer screen, even if I'm buying a pair of sneakers.
So, and as you know, the ZBA has routed it to all of the departments and the different boards and commissions. They, under the, under the, under the 40B law and the comprehensive permit, can look at, doing the waivers, site plan review. Craig and myself are essentially doing the development review portion as if it was a site plan slash special permit in front of you. So, we're doing that, we're going to look at sending the traffic out, and then if anything else arises that we need a consultant for, or help, we will. This is just for you to take a look at it. The Planning Board can, at any time during the process, after you've reviewed it, if you want me to keep this on the agenda, discuss it. If you wish to, you know, do a formalized letter with comments, and that, you know, it is your right and your choice to look at doing that. So, this is just kind of the process. The first, the first meeting, though, on May 2nd is more or less an introduction of the project, talk about the process, and, you know, how they're, how the, the ZBA wishes to process and move forward. The ZBA has 180 days to close the public hearing, and then they have 40 days after the close of the public hearing to issue a decision. I know that there will be discussion involved, is that we are over the 10%. So, the ZBA, if they wish, they could just say no and deny it. The ZBA could institute, if they wanted to, under the law, and, and our counsel will be there to counsel, Brian Winter will be there to counsel them at the meeting. They could initiate and declare a safe harbor, which means that if we want, that saying that we are over the 10%, if we, if we so choose, you know, we can, we'll look at reviewing this, but, you know, we still reserve the right, if they don't want to, looking at denying it. And, so it wouldn't, and then that, if they initiated that, then it wouldn't be appealable to the HJC. So, so there's a lot of intricacies, you know, with this application, but this is just, you know, and, Mr. Chairman, you asked me to, you know, put it on, and I did.
I appreciate.
And I wanted to get it on there, and, you know, I think that...
Well, I think it's good that we have it on our agenda, we can follow through with it, and we can, everybody can discuss it as we're going forward.
Yeah, and then, and then at some, at whatever point, if you, you know, wish to formalize, you know, a comment letter, you know, obviously, I'm here to help you do that, and so it's great.
I think we should, but I also like, if the board so wishes to at least put together a recommendation tonight from the board, so that it gets to the ZBA before the next meeting, if this board so wishes that we would like to reiterate or state that we want them to take...
You may want to pull closer to the...
I'm sorry, that we would want them to take a position of safe harbor on this immediately, so that they at least know opposition as a board, if the board is open to being able to do that, to have that recommendation come from us for the meeting for next week.
Okay, yeah.
So, I'm just putting that off for discussion. I know, Peter, you had a question?
Yeah, question, comment?
And, by the way, the, in the audience is Barry Cremmons, who's the attorney representing them, and a representative from Hebrew Senior Life. So, you know, they are in the audience, you know. This is not a public hearing, this is just a discussion, informal, so if you wish to ask them a question, if they want to talk, you know, you, you can have a discussion back and forth. You're not prohibited by anything.
Good.
Now, one of the questions, comments that I have is, on May 2nd, is you said that's a ZBA meeting?
That is the first ZBA meeting. They're required to hold the meeting within 30 days. The applicant has waived the 30 days because it's 32 days, Barry? 33, 4, or 5 days, they've waived that. But I will let you know that the 180 days is September 24th. I, I do know that, because I have that written.
Well, you look, and the reason I bring that up is, that's the beginning of the organizational meeting for town meeting, so I don't know how many members of the ZBA are town meeting representatives, so there may be some conflict there, I don't know, I'm just...
Well...
Or town meeting members that would like to attend the zoning meeting.
Yeah, yeah, and it's, that's going to be the first of probably several meetings, so...
Right, but it may be from the understanding I had from that letter from Attorney Winter, is that that may be the pivotal meeting as far as us being able to claim a safe harbor at that point.
Correct, yes.
If we don't do it in the first meeting, then we have things going forward, so I think it's important that that board knows that we need to, we want to have that done. That's the only reason I want to bring it up, at least from the Planning Board, if the board so wishes that it would do it. So, a safe harbor, that would allow, and get me if I'm wrong, but what my understanding is, that would allow the zoning board to be able to reject the application further down the line, without the applicant being able to go to the state or to be able to sue the town for not conforming. If they don't declare the safe harbor, then the applicant at later date, if it was refused, could then go back to the state or come and sue the town for the 40B to go into.
Through the appeals process, yes.
Through the appeals process, for the 40B to be put into the town. Right now, we are just under 12% affordable housing, we don't need to accept a 40B if we're over 10, if we're over 10%.
Right, we have, we're at 11.16%, and, and as I've known, I've let Dan know, and the CPZ's asked me, in 2029, 105 units come off the inventory, and that will take us to 10.16. This application would take us to over 12%, and 2029 would have us at 11.16.
And that's based upon no other affordable units or other units coming online, right, which we do know that...
And, and I will let you know, that's based on no more affordable units coming online, which nothing's in the pipeline between now and 2029. I will let you know, nothing's in the pipeline on that.
Right.
In addition, and to do something between now and 20, you know, to do enough, the whole project would probably take almost four or five years to do an affordable project. And I will let you know that that dropping, you know, from 10 point, dropping from 11.16 to 10.16, it literally drops one percentage point, that's based on, the way they figure it, that's based on current units.
Right.
And as, so, so in 2029, if we have 200 more units to houses, not this project, just normal construction of the 22 units that are approved over here, and, and the 33 units that are approved over on Atkinson Ave, that 10.16% will actually be lower, and I estimate it's probably closer to the 10%. So, you know, I'm not trying to sway the way, I'm just letting you know the mathematical facts.
No, just the facts, right.
That in 2029, we are going to be very, very, very close to right at 10%.
And I think that's, you know, there's a, there's a reason for this project coming through, and why the Board of Selectmen and other people have looked at this as a good project for the town, and one of this, they're also looking for senior housing and more affordable senior housing coming into town, and my understanding is that 70% of these units will be going for town residents.
The, well, my, the, where the thing's written is, is that they can reserve up to 70% for the first, the, when they initially open the project up. When, after, after it becomes full, then, then that's, it doesn't, it doesn't reserve it for 70% in perpetuity, that the state will not allow that. They, they will allow a, a Stoughton, and actually, the applicant probably can explain the preference much better than I am, that it's really for the initial offering when they, is, is that they can do the Stoughton preference.
Right, but my understanding is all, all the units that get approved with this will be affordable in the town, or not?
Correct.
So, do they, no marketable units?
It's a 100% affordable project. It's actually, you know, as far as for seniors going, which is a very, a vulnerable population, they call it the LMI, which is the Low to Mid Income Scale, and a normal project to qualify has to be, you have to make 80% LMI of the median average income. This project has components for 60% LMI, which is, you know, folks that have, you know, even, you know, seniors that are restricted income even more, and then there's a certain percentage for 30% LMI, which is, is, you know, extremely low income seniors that can, you know, for pricing for their units.
Bill?
And Craig and I today, we have not done a full review, we're not going to, so we're not going to get into, you know, all the parking, landscape, we haven't done that, this is really...
And I think, you know, and that's fine, I think we all had, we all had to have a shot at that, we have the plans, we can do it, and then you guys could do, you know, you guys do a very good job with that as we go forward. I think tonight's, you know, with the information on tonight, which I think is good, and everybody knows, where we are and what the process needs to be.
We're at the beginning stages. You're at the beginning of the marathon.
And I just think, I, you know, again, I just would like to look at the board, and if, if so be it that we would at least send a notice or some sort of a letter to the zoning board for next week's meeting, that we would recommend that this project go for, you know, that we declare a safe harbor on this project unless there's some outstanding reason, not to. At least that gives the town the option down the road, if something isn't going to go the way that we expect it to go, that we would have an option to do that.
And if you vote that to authorize, I could write the letter for the Chairman's signature.
Correct.
I have one question.
Go ahead, Paul.
Affordable housing, now, of course, this is all over 62. What, is a town able to meet all their affordable housing by just putting in senior Senate, senior housing?
No, no, and, and the town hasn't. The town's actually, you know, I, I don't have the numbers exactly, but of the 351 communities in the Commonwealth, Stoughton ranks in the, you know, probably the upper 15%, you know, a significant portion, I don't have the numbers of, of how many communities have actually met, they're 10% or not. The cities do.
But, but does the, does the law, I'm not...
No, it cannot be fulfilled with strictly seniors.
So, there's a percentage, it has to go under, you know...
I don't know the intricacies of what the details are for DHCD.
So, we're not in any conflict with that?
No, no.
I have a question now, too. Why is this being done under 40B? And just say somebody had a property with a couple acres and wanted to put 20 units identical to what they're doing, could they be, could that be done under 40B? What's, what makes this special that it can go to 40B?
Because it's a, it's an affordable project, it qualifies under the DHCD, and I know, I use the word DHCD, I think it's something, they've got a new acronym, every new governor comes in and they do something EOL, something livable communities, I don't know, but I'm just going to say DHCD, because we're all familiar with that, DHCD. It's an, it's, it qualifies under affordability. As Chairman Kelly mentioned, you know, we are over the 10%, so, you know, somebody could submit a, the reason that 40Bs are submitted is, is that they qualify as being, meeting DHCD guidelines of affordability, and then, under, and, and under our zoning, you know, would not be allowed. This is a single-family zone. So, so what they're proposing, density-wise isn't allowed, height-wise, and they have the, the list of waivers. And it's called a consolidated permit, so instead of going and getting variances, because some places don't allow variances for use, some communities do, we do not. So, you couldn't, you couldn't own two acres to put, you know, 20, 15 units on it and go through traditional zoning, if it's single-family, and go get, oh, I'm going to get a variance for the use and the height, and you can't do that. And so if you qualify under the state's, you know, affordability, you could look at requesting, you know, a 40B. If you are under the 10%, they, they can go ahead and submit the thing, and, and it's, you know, reviewed and negotiations on, on everything. As Mr. Kelly's mentioned, we are over the 10%, so ours is, well, in essence, what Chairman Kelly is saying with safe harbors is saying, okay, to initiate the safe harbors, it's, okay, Hebrew Senior Life, we are, yes, you've submitted the 40B, we are over our 10%, however, we're going to initiate the safe harbors, we're going to hear your project, and we're going to look at it. You know, a lot of people support the need, we support the need for senior housing, and so let's go through the process and see what the devil is and the details. And I think, that's essentially, that's essentially what, you know...
I think what they also does in, in reality, is it gives us a little bit more leeway in how we want, how we want the project to look. If the town really wants the project, and they want X number of units, which I think is, you know, is admirable, I think the town wants that as far as the elderly and having the, that type of a project in town, that's all well and good, but we should have a chance to be able to shape that project in the way that it outfits the town better.
And, and that's the give and take with the, with the 40B application.
And you wouldn't have as much leeway, I think, if we didn't claim the safe harbors, and that way, I think we would have a better...
Because, because the state is always pushing to maximize density now, we got the MBTA communities, that, you know, and that's a concern of mine, that we're going to have, you know, 10,000 units that hold a million people. I'm exaggerating, of course, but you know what I'm, what I'm getting at.
I know. These are all single, single-bedroom units, so, single, single units, by the way. So, no two bedrooms, no three bedrooms.
Are they restricted, like, that a 62-year-old senior citizen could have a grandchild living with them, or...
I, I do not know. See, these are questions that...
These will come up in the, in the public hearing.
I think these are, these are questions, if you have questions, too, that, and concerns, you know what? Craig and I are reviewing this, if you send me, if anyone in the public sees this and has anything, and they, they want, you know, show up, write, send me an email, I can, I will make that part of the public record and, and ask that question. So, anything that the board has, they funnel it through myself and through Craig, and, like, I know that, you know, there's, people have asked, it's like, well, how much of these things are going to be rented for, and all these, there's all of these, I've already got a list of questions that people have asked that need to be answered. I'm like, I don't know. I know that, you know, it's under the, you know, as far as the, whatever MSA, Metropolitan Group, that area this is dictates the prices, but I have no idea, but they'll know that. So, these are, you know, any, any questions you have, jot them, write them down, email me. You can email me as Planning Board member, as a citizen, or as a concerned citizen, you can email it or write it, and then we will, that will, that will be part of the public record, and, and I will ask the ZBA, hey, these questions have been asked, and they need to be answered.
Anybody else on board have any other questions right now? All right, Peter.
The, getting back to the ZBA, when is their typical meetings? Is it kind of like us, twice a month?
Yeah, they do every other, they do the opposite weeks we do.
The opposite Thursdays, okay.
So, and one of the things, they usually meet in there, and we've switched, we've switched, we're meeting here, they are all virtual, they are in-person, virtual, and they're going to be in this room. Because I, initially, when I talked to the chairman, I said, we need to move it to the great, and he goes, oh, we only meet in the Antis room, and I'm like, the ZBA, town staff, and the consultants, and the applicant's consultants are going to fill that room, and there's no room for the public. So, we've already made the decision, the, the meetings will be out here.
Okay.
So, it will be done out here, and it's virtual.
But they're on opposite Thursdays of us, anyway, so...
I think, I believe they are.
Right, there's, there has been meetings, they've had meetings with us, but I think it's going to switch on their part, to be honest.
Correct, because they needed, they had to get some sort of decision out.
I just think they'll be in our best interest to attend some of their meetings as this is going on.
Oh, yeah.
Right, well, I think if we're going to do that, we just need to make sure that no more than two members show up.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Or if, if...
Or if we have a joint meeting, we could set up a joint meeting, right, but once we're up to three...
Well, no, I could advertise, I could notice that the Planning Board will be attending the meeting, and there may be a quorum. I, I think there's issues, and I think we can, I'll talk with our town council. I believe that, I believe if you aren't debating, and all five of you could show up as members sitting in the audience, but as long as, you know, you're not debating and making a decision, I think that's fine.
Take a...
However, I will talk with council and say, the Planning Board wishes to make sure they don't violate the open meeting law, if more than, you know, two attend, if three attend, how should I notice that, that they may, that they'll be in attendance?
Right.
So, I will ask Brian Winter that question for you. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Barry, I was going to get to you, I appreciate you showing up, and I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
I'm Ms. Deb Warren.
Why don't you come up to the desk up here, thank you.
You need to press the button, so it's green, and you can sit.
I want to acknowledge, I appreciate you showing up, this is obviously not a public hearing, but I'm open to listening to you guys right now, because we, it is, I appreciate you actually taking part in our meeting or being, being part of this at this point when you don't have to, I understand that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can't get into any of those specifics tonight, but rather just comment generally on a couple of items that did come up tonight. One is, in, whether, I know Peter's a town meeting member, I think Paul may be a town meeting member, I'm not sure, we're having an informational session Monday night, right in this room, in conjunction with the Community Preservation Committee. That'll be Monday night at 7:00. So, you're certainly welcome, anyone is welcome to come to that meeting. We're going to make a presentation to the town meeting members, or whomever else may be in attendance that night, and answer any questions that folks may have, that's number one. Number two, you know, Bill obviously is correct, we have our first meeting with the zoning Board of Appeals next Thursday night. I agree with the assessment that Bill made, that chances are, that's going to be probably more of a procedural discussion for the most part than it's going to be a substantive discussion. Once again, you, as any other resident of the town, you know, is welcome to come to that meeting. I also agree with Bill's assessment, and not to interfere with town council's role, you folks showing up at a meeting is not a violation of the open meeting law. You just can't deliberate on the matter. But all five of you can attend a meeting, that is, that is not a violation of the open meeting law, so that's not an issue. And I think the last thing that I want to mention, and see if Deb wants to add anything, is we're more than happy to come, you know, as you know, Danny, and we talked just briefly in the parking lot, this item was on the agenda just as a discussion for you folks, we're more than happy to come to one of your meetings and make a formal presentation to you, if you would wish us to do so. And as Bill said, there's certainly going to be plenty of time, for better or for worse, my client might not like to hear this, but before the zoning board is... my client might not like to hear this, but before the zoning board is probably going to be in a position to vote. So we anticipate a number of sessions with the Zoning Board of Appeals. And again, as was mentioned, their typical meeting cadence is the first and third Thursdays of the month, where yours is the second and fourth. So, you know, we're more than happy to come to, come to a meeting, make a presentation, so that, you know, if and when, if you were to make any type of a formal recommendation to the zoning board, and we would welcome you to do so, obviously, you have a fully-informed ability to do so. So we're, you know, we're more than happy to do that. Deb, I don't know if there was anything you wanted to add.
Yes, thank you. My name is Deb Morse, and I work at Hebrew Senior Life, and very much appreciate your interest in this project, which we have designed to meet the needs of the people of Stoughton. We are deliberately designing an entirely affordable, one-bedroom, senior housing community, because we understand that that is one of your most pressing needs. There will likely be no grandchildren at the community staying overnight, because they're all one-bedroom units. We do hope that there'll be a lot of grandchildren and other young people from Stoughton who enjoy being there. We have, we pride ourselves in providing a lot of multi-generational programming, so we hope there is a lot of multi-generational activity there. But it's going to be all one-bedroom units, so we don't envision any young people living there, other than maybe a sleepover with their grandparents or something.
Is it restricted, though?
Yes, it will be age-restricted, so one, if there's two members in the household, at least one member must be the age of 62 years of age or older. There could be someone, if they have, their partner is a bit younger, that's okay, but it will be age-restricted.
So in essence, a 62-year-old person could have a 23-year-old daughter or son live with them at the facility?
Well, it's a one-bedroom apartment, so it would be a little.
I know.
Tricky.
There's a couch, too, yeah. Companion. I mean, it could be the college kid or whatever, you know, I mean, it just, there's the, and I know this kind of questions will come up when you bring it to a town meeting, and people will jump all over these things, you know. So I just want to get a feeling for, you know, what are the possibilities that we're, could see and people will be questioning.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know what the bylaws or covenants could do to enforce something like that, you know, that absolutely a second-generation child could not, could stay there at occasion, but could not be a resident.
I will double-check, I think there is sort of a limit to the number of consecutive days.
Okay.
That someone who's not on the lease can, can be there.
Those are important. I know people will be jumping on those things.
The only comment that, well, one of the comments I had was, I looked at the layout of the rooms, and they're actually a small room. So to, even with a married couple being in that room, it's going to be close quarters.
They're about 640 square feet, plus or minus. The units that are accessible are a little larger. But you're right, I mean, they're, they're not enormously spacious. There's, we've, we've designed them so that there's a lot of storage space. People can have friends over for dinner, and there's enough clearance in the kitchen and the dining area. But in order to keep the costs manageable and provide as much affordable housing as possible, the size of the units, you know, are, they're not single-family homes.
Right.
Yeah.
Like I said, just my first glance at it, and the other issue, comment that I have, is handicap accessibility. Because of the size of the bedrooms, it would be very restrictive. I mean, if you had someone with a wheelchair to try to get into a bedroom that size.
So all of the units, whether they're code-accessible or not.
Yeah.
Are designed to be what's called visitable. So that a person, so a person moves in and they're fully physically able. They stay with us, hopefully, forever, but their physical capabilities change over time. And so what, the way we design the units, is that as a person's physical capabilities change, we can continue to accommodate them. So for example, under the sink in the kitchen, with a couple of screws, we can pull out some of the kitchen cabinets, so that a person, if the person all of a sudden becomes, moves in, they're fully capable, over time, they're now in a wheelchair, they can stay in that unit. So the units, the radius of the units are designed, the door widths, the bathrooms, everything is designed in the event, God forbid, someone does become in a wheelchair. They won't have to move to a code-compliant, accessible unit.
Okay.
Yep.
And I can relate to that, because two years ago I had a stroke.
Oh.
And I was limited to a wheelchair.
Yeah.
You know, overnight, my whole life changed, so.
That's, these are our people.
Yeah.
Right? And so the idea is that you're, you move into a Hebrew Senior Life community, you're part of our family, we want to do everything we possibly can to keep you out of the hospital, to keep you out of a nursing home, and that you just, you stay here until you don't stay here.
It comes down to 36-inch door openings and a six-foot turning radius in the bathroom.
Yeah.
That's basic AD.
And very low thresholds to the shower.
Yeah.
And grab accessories everywhere, so they don't look institutionalized or like you're in a hospital. But the toilet paper holder can hold your weight, there's like, all the bars, the towel racks are called grab accessories, so that they, they act as though what you might see in a hospital setting, but they're very attractive and you would never know.
Okay. It's just that.
Yep.
My opinion has changed, or my outlook has changed. Since then, we used to look at things differently.
And the other thing that we offer, and part of the reason why we want to have this many units and this height of the building, is we provide this astonishing amount of supportive services to everybody who lives in our communities. So we, we're designing this space for that, whether it's outdoor space, or a multipurpose room, or all, or fitness room, a salon. And we have a lot of staff at our communities who get to know every resident, get to know every resident's families, and we take care of everybody who moves in. There's a lot of, like, happy activities, but there's also a lot of one-on-one care. So if, in your, like, in your circumstance, you were living in our community and you had a stroke or some other medical help, we are in touch with all of your doctors, with the hospital, we know exactly what your medical treatment is, we know exactly when you're going to be discharged, we make sure that you have all the services you need when you come back. It's kind of astonishing, like, how much, the services that we provide. And so we design space in the building to allow for those services. And to make those services economically feasible, we need to have enough units in a building to make that work.
And off the record, my wife was a visiting nurse, and she has been to some of your other facilities and spoke very highly.
Oh, that's good to hear. I'm glad your wife, thank your wife for her service to that, that's a hard position.
Do you have community centers in other towns that would be similar to what you're proposing right here?
Yes, we have 205 units of affordable housing in Randolph, that also has a lot of community space. We have several hundred units of affordable housing in Brookline, and also in Revere. And then we have two, and we just opened a community in Dorchester. And then we have two continuing care retirement communities, one in Canton and one in Dedham. And they all have a lot of community space. And in fact, I mean, just as a, by way of example, during COVID, which were our worst days ever, we, before the governor declared a state of emergency, we basically quarantined 2,600 residents and said, this is it, like, we're not, you're not going anywhere. We did 15,000 pounds of laundry a week. We walked dogs, we delivered meals and snacks, and many of our residents in our supportive housing sites didn't have iPads, we bought them all iPads, we had programming coming through the TVs, we did whatever it took, we picked up their medications, we did what got them to dialysis, whatever it took to keep them safe during those darkest days of 2020. We spent, I think, $16 million in making sure that our residents stayed safe during that time. Much of that money came from philanthropic donations. So we declared our own internal state of emergency, it was all hands on deck, but, you know, you're part of the HSL family and that's it, we're going to take care of you.
So this is basically a affordable, assisted-living type of setup?
So we can't say, like, assisted living is like a technical, and you have to be licensed.
That's what you're getting at.
So this won't be assisted living, but it's, what it is, is like, service-enriched, independent living?
There you go. That's a good term.
It's going to look and feel a lot like assisted living, but it's service-enriched independent living. Yeah.
Now, my only issue is 40B. I've always had an issue with the state telling you what to do, and all the exemptions, all the waivers, you know? I mean, of course, we need senior housing, but.
You know, when we started this project, we were calling it, and we were calling it a friendly 40B, like, we, because we really didn't want to come in under the auspices of, like, the state says this, this, and this, right? It's, we happen to own this land, we wanted to do the right thing for Stoughton, which is where we think we've landed with the, with collaboration from a lot of different staff people from the town. I hear your point. It's hard to get away from the vocabulary, but we're trying to.
Mm-hmm.
Paul, if I may, through you, Mr. Chairman, there's another important reason it was filed as a 40B, other than, you know, the obvious ones that Bill mentioned, that, you know, the land is zoned for single-family. Our zoning bylaw, if you were to look at it, it has a category for so-called senior housing. It is only allowed by the town or another governmental agency such as the Housing Authority. There is no mechanism in our zoning bylaw today for a private party to build senior housing. Right? So this had to be done, as any other senior housing project.
Barry, you should have changed that a long time ago.
Pardon me?
You should have changed that a long time ago.
Yeah, we tried to.
How did that development get behind Palio's on Central Street?
The assisted-living facility?
Yeah.
I think, if memory serves me, they just got a special permit from the zoning board, because that was not done as a 40B. I wasn't involved with that project, so I don't know for sure, but again.
But it is still senior housing, right?
When, yeah. When we, when we were looking at, you know, the old Swan's Tavern at the Conner Central and Turnpike, you know, we put forward an amendment to allow for senior housing, but there were some people who sort of didn't want to open it up to the private sector and said, okay, we can do this, but it's going to be limited.
I remember that. That was very broad, though. That was, you know, you could buy three houses, knock them down in a neighborhood, and do what you want to do, type of thing, too.
But in addition to what Deb was saying, you know, what, again, we typically refer to as a so-called friendly 40B, the other very, very basic fundamental reason is, senior housing can only be done under our current bylaw by a governmental entity.
Right, but just on a technical basis, if they were going for, if they were actually a friendly 40B, that has to be brought before the Board of Selectmen and voted by the Board of Selectmen to be a friendly 40B. So technically, by law, they're not a friendly 40B. So, and that's the reason I brought up the point about the safe harbor, because the only way to, if they're not coming as a friendly 40B, negotiations aren't as easy, and it's easier for the town, in the long run, to have a safe harbor, to be able to negotiate what we want with them, however that may be.
Okay.
So.
Paul, you brought up the point about assisted living.
It is, it is.
Can you hear me now? So we had that application over on Pleasant Street not too long ago that was assisted living?
Yeah.
We had a category in the zoning bylaw for, to allow that through a special permit, so.
Okay.
But they're not technically a assisted-living facility.
Right, right.
It's senior housing, so it's a little different.
All right, so at this point, in order to move forward, does the board wish to vote, or at least send a recommendation to the zoning board about a recommendation of a safe harbor?
Yes.
Sure. Do you have a motion for that?
Motion to recommend safe harbor to the Zoning Board of Appeals for this project.
Can I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So Bill, could you write something up along those lines?
I will draft a letter for your signature, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak.
Very welcome. Thank you for actually coming, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Go downstairs to the conservation.
Another waiver.
All right, the next item on the agenda is general business, and we have meeting minutes to review. Has everybody had an opportunity?
Yes.
To review the meeting minutes of March 28, 2024.
I have read them, I have no comments, no changes.
Bill, I saw your changes, and I see the draft, and I saw your changes, and I see the draft, and I've got no issues, I think we're good with it. Anybody else have any?
No.
Can I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes of March 28, 2024?
So made.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is other business. Bill, do you have any other business?
I don't. I do notice that Mr. Don Cox has joined the, on the Zoom, or on the Google meets. I don't know if they had any, any other business that they wanted to discuss with the Planning Board.
Mr. Cox, do you have anything that you'd like to say tonight?
Is he muted?
They're muted.
Mr. Cox, you're muted on your mic, we can't hear you.
Okay, I guess he doesn't. Or he or she does not.
All right, if there's no other, other business, can I have a?
I'm sorry, we do have the, our next meeting is May 9, and that meeting will be predominantly presentation for, of the, kind of the final presentation of the Route 27 project.
Okay.
So, the Route 27 zoning study project with MAPC.
Yep. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So made.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Can we have a sign something?